Good evening. We'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's Town Council meeting. It is February 23rd, 2015. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Carrasco.
Present.
Counselor Clemens.
Present.
Counselor Strata.
Present.
Counselor Manah.
Present.
Counselor Moriarty.
Present.
Counselor Peliquin.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Counselor Vandal.
Present.
Counselor Vecchia.
Excused.
Eight present.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, Consider and Accept the Town Council Meeting Minutes of Monday, February 12th, 2015.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, clarifications?
I'd like to abstain, please.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to abstain.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, simple hand vote is fine, all those in favor. Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, Subcommittee Reports, A General Government Counselor Clemens.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have not had a meeting recently, so there were no minutes. However, there is a meeting scheduled for this Thursday, February 26th, at 7:00 PM in the George Parent Community Room. On the agenda will be further discussion on the employee group health insurance, if anybody has any questions that we might be able to answer at that point. We still will not have all the information of the costs and such, but we are planning to have the information from our previous meeting on 2/17 and continue the discussion. And second agenda item is the donation of Christmas holiday decorations. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. B, DPW Counselor Vandal.
I'll report, no meeting scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. E, rather, I'm sorry, C, Education and Human Services Counselor Peliquin.
Thank you. We do have two meetings scheduled. The first is on the 12th of March at 7:00 PM in the George Parent Room, and the second is on the 19th of March at 7:00 PM, and that's in the George Parent Room as well, and those are for going over the school budget in our budget process.
Thank you. D, Planning and Development Counselor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no minutes and no meetings planned, thank you.
Thank you. E, Protection of Persons and Property Counselor Carrasco.
We have no minutes and no meeting scheduled at this time.
Okay. F, Town Manager Search Committee Counselor Carrasco.
Just again, there's no meeting scheduled, but tonight we will be voting on the Town Manager profile, which will, once approved, will be, I'll ask the Town Manager to also be posted on our website, because it, after tonight, it will become a public document. It will be the document that will be used to attract Town Manager candidates. So after tonight's vote, it will be in a public document, so it'll be open for anybody to see, and hopefully our Edwards-Collins Center will begin the recruitment process, because this is the final document that they needed for it.
Thank you. Moving on to five Chairman's announcements, I have a few. One, if you see any potholes on a state road, those are the ones obviously with the white lines on the sides, feel free to call the state at 857-DOT-INFO, that's 857-368-4636, or at 877-MA.GOV, that's the phone number, not a website, and you can call them, and they have pledged, according to news reports that I saw today, that they would try, they would endeavor to correct those within 24 hours. I also have, want to thank and congratulate the members of the Southbridge Bicentennial Committee this weekend on Saturday, as the snowstorm was coming in, which certainly made it, I'm sure for many, an interesting ride home. I know for me, going up Dennison Hill was, was an hour-long adventure, but they put on the Dance Through Time as kind of a kickoff towards the bicentennial events of next year, really kind of also coinciding with the town's 199th birthday, which was just last week. And despite the snow that was coming down in pretty good fashion, pretty heavily, it was a very good turnout, heard a lot of really good positive things from those that were in attendance, a ridiculous number of door prizes and raffle items and things to that effect, so I just wanted to applaud them and thank them, as well as all those who came out. I know that snow removal will be taking place on Main Street tomorrow from 6:30 AM to 2:30 PM. Snow removal will be going from the Goddard Street to Everett Street, on that side of the street, of Main Street, and then on the opposite side, from Foster Street to Hamilton Street, and the DPW and police departments advise to plan accordingly, because some of the travel lanes will be restricted in those areas during those times. Additional, snow removal will take place on other streets on Wednesday and Thursday, and there will be postings and signage and such out for that. With that, and I'm going to request this through the manager, as I did two weeks ago, we have a number of places that have been rectified in terms of issues with snow piles and so forth. There is one that is still, in my mind, a big concern, and that is the large, at least several feet tall, mountain of snow that's sitting between the Pizza Chef and convenience store on Hamilton Street, right by Hook Street. There is a parking lot, two, three-tiered parking lot that's there, and that first tier at least has been plowed out, however, it appears that whoever plowed it out did so at the expense of the sidewalk, by dumping that snow onto the sidewalk, and basically if you want to go from one end to Hamilton Street to the other, you literally have to walk into the street, because you have no other option short of climbing Mount Kilimanjaro. So personally, I have, I have big issues with the appearance anyways that snow was dumped on the sidewalk this way, but I know we've seen in recent weeks or days, there was just a fatal accident in another community not too long ago with somebody who had to walk around a pile just like that, and this community's gone through quite a bit of that as late in terms of premature passings.
We'll get at that tomorrow, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
That's Hamilton and?
Hamilton and Hook Street.
Hook Street.
Right by the Pizza Chef and, I forget what the name of the convenience stores. In terms of, of passings, I'm sorry?
If we could stay on this note.
Sure.
On the opposite side, 60 Hook Street also, the old house that's on the corner, I noticed in the paper that that passed hands, there are new owners to that property, but that entire corner going down towards Tassie. So basically, on both sides, you would be hindered in getting to where you need to be on Hamilton Street, no matter whether you took the long way and tried to cross the street, you still wouldn't be able to do what you needed to do. Luckily, the other abandoned house next to that, the 80 Hamilton Street, has been being taken care of by the neighbor, who has told me that they continue to go to that point, but that whole corner hasn't, hadn't been done the last I was by there, so, both sides.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly, we had, over the weekend, a very large show of community support in the passing of Kevin St. Pierre, who I remember as a kid from Little League 10 years ago, a pretty decent little catcher. We also had, as late, the passing of Mr. Will Hicks, and I just wanted to read this piece from some literature that had been written about Mr. Hicks and his accomplishments. Will Hicks had made major contributions to fiber optics as an inventor, an entrepreneur, and a visionary. The most important of his many inventions was the single-mode optical fiber, which others enhanced to make it the backbone of the global telecommunications network. His first company, Mosaic Fabrications, was a pioneer in fused fiber devices, and he was a founder, he founded, rather, a series of other companies in central Massachusetts, including here in Southbridge. As a visionary, he was among the first to envision today's high-capacity fiber optic systems that can transmit many optical signals at different wavelengths simultaneously through one single-mode fiber. So we wanted to just express our condolences to the Hicks family, as well as the St. Pierre family, in their difficult times. In addition, that's really actually all I have, fortunately, so, with that, I will pass it off to the Town Manager for Town Manager's announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the council. Just two quick things. First, work continues on the budget, that's pretty much the all-encompassing topic for me this time of year, obviously. We are on target to have it done probably a little earlier than the end of March, so that'll be good news, and we're on target to meet the council's goal of no new taxation next year. Second thing, we have had some calls from the public about snow removal. In past years, we've done snow removal operations at night, and we're not doing that this year. We are already over half a million dollars expended for snow and ice removal. I don't have the exact numbers, because we don't have this weekend, every time we get it compiled, of course, then we have another snowstorm, so it's a little hard to get exact numbers, but we are over half a million, and so what we've done is we've started doing daytime snow operations. It works very well, it's extremely cost-effective, it costs us about $3,600 to rent four, or five, or six triaxle trucks, which augment our own fleet in hauling a snow away. We use the Snowgo, think giant snow blower, and it's very efficient. People are very cooperative, we post the roads at night, and people are great the next day. The very rare person who decides to ignore those warnings, we have had a few toes, but not many. The basic issue here is that the cost to do a nighttime snow removal operation with the crew on overtime in rented trucks is $20,000 per night. The cost to do the exact same operation during the day is about $3,600. We have been able to do, obviously, much, much more daytime snow removal than in past years, much, much more cost-effectively. Unfortunately, this year being the year it's been, every time we get the snow moved, we get more snow, and it just piles back up. But I wanted the council, I know the council's already aware of this, but I guess I'm putting this out more to the public, we're doing this much more cost-efficiently, but it's not quite, it doesn't look quite as good as it does when we do it at night with the loaders and the, and the scrapers and all that, but the cost variation is enormous. Tomorrow, we are going to start with a greater, again, daytime, to start pulling the snow off the area between the curb line and the back of the sidewalk, and we're going to be doing that on Main Street, as the chair indicated earlier, and so people will see that effect where there's no snow at all left anymore, and we'll be doing that around town as time allows. We are also going to put a couple people in our snow removal, small snow removal equipment, and start getting to the sidewalks within a mile and a half radius of the schools that are still unplowed with the snow that hasn't been removed, because the owners haven't done it. The owners of, the butters to those areas will be receiving a bill from the town, as well as an additional fine, and after 30 days, if the bill and the fine isn't paid, it'll be places lean on the house, we'll record that. So we are executing the council's policy on sidewalk snow removal, and we're doing it on Main Street as well, but people have called and said, where are those nighttime crews? The answer is $20,000, five days, another $100,000, so with a half a million already spent, we're just not going to commit those resources at night.
Counselor Steves.
Unless the council wants me to, and I'll be happy to.
Actually, I was going to ask you a question about that regarding specifically this past Saturday, does this, does this price range also cover for doing it on Saturday or Sunday during the day, as opposed to, for example, this past Saturday night?
Say that again?
Do we end up paying overtime for them coming in over, over the weekend?
Yes.
We do?
Yes, and tragically, of course, this year, almost every storm has been a weekend event, so. We get bad luck and no luck this year, this is just one of those years, you know? All the storms have been Saturday, Sunday, or Sunday, Monday events, except for the blizzard, which was Sunday, Monday, Tuesday event, so we're really getting whacked this year, because we have to bring the crews in to pre-treat, sand and salt on a weekend, and then we've got to bring them into clear snow, it's all on overtime.
So in that case, then, let's say, for this past weekend storm, if, when we came in on Sunday, were they doing the $20,000 or the $3,600?
No, when we, when we bring in just our own crew, and we do the three-hours pre-treatment on overtime, and then we do the minimum three-hours street clearing on a small storm, that cost is in the $6,000 to $7,000 range. If we bring in the contractors on top of it, then that can get up into a $10,000, $11,000, kind of a range, assuming it's a three- or four-hour snow clearing event. If it ends up going longer than that, then of course the price starts going up. We've been making decisions, as I know the council's aware from the texts we've been sending you through the storms, to be very, very judicious in our use of overtime, so for instance, we'll bring the crews in for three hours pre-treat, and then send them home, and then bring them back after we've got three or four inches on the ground, and if it's a weekend night, a Saturday or a Friday night, when we know there's not going to be a lot of traffic out between midnight and 6:00 AM, we might let a little more snow accumulate before we bring the crew in on overtime.
Yeah, I know, Saturday.
Particularly on a Sunday, because as of 7:00 o'clock, they go back on straight time, so we pay a three-hour minimum, so what we try to do is bring the crew in no sooner than 4:00 AM if we can, 4:00 to 7:00 is overtime, we're paying that anyways, and we'd like to have them work, 7:00 they go on straight time, so we're being very observant of all that, and trying to, trying to do what we can to save money, but it's, it's tough this year.
Has there ever been a thought of, I don't know if this is something that we need to be negotiated with the union, but any idea of trying to assign certain DPW people to actually, they actually would be assigned to work weekends, specifically during winter, to, to ensure that there's on, on-the-clock, regular on-the-clock coverage?
Do it for less money?
Yeah.
Highly unlikely. We could certainly have the discussion, but not likely, but we can talk about anything with them, sure.
Well, I was thinking, instead of like doing a Monday to Friday shift, their, their regular shift is Wednesday to Sunday.
Yeah, I'm in negotiations with the mouse, so I can certainly have the conversation, but I don't want to misrepresent and be optimistic, that's pretty core union business, weekend double, weekend time and a half, you know, so, but we can have the conversation.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Swearing and Presentations. On the agenda has two, we will actually only have one tonight, and that is a presentation to former Senator Richard Moore. Senator Moore has spent a great deal of time, a few decades now, in public service, in particular, the last couple decades here, among other communities, but representing Southbridge, and I would say, representing it pretty well. We actually had, not too long ago, after the election even, we had received word from Senator Moore and through the state on a number of grants that have come a great, great deal of help, and will help with things such as parks and ADA access and non-compliance issues, and a whole host of things. So what I'd like to do is invite Senator Moore and Mrs. Moore to the podium here. So we have here a couple things for you, the first of which is a proclamation here from the town. Usually, it is the senator that is handing these things out to other folks, but tonight he gets to be on the other side of that, and this reads, "Whereas, Richard T. Moore has dedicated the better part of the last 40 years in government, and whereas, Richard T. Moore has served both the state and federal governments, including serving as state senator representing the town of Southbridge from 1996 to 2015, and whereas, Mr. Moore served his constituents well by lobbying and representing the people of Southbridge, now therefore, the citizens of Southbridge, Massachusetts, by its Town Council hereby wishes to give thanks and appreciation for his dedicated and loyal service, and this is signed myself as the council chair and by Kevin Pecos as the interim Town Manager." Before we ask the senator to, to say a few words, we actually have a large number of folks from the Southbridge Bicentennial Committee. Senator Moore, unbeknownst to, I think, pretty much everybody on the Bicentennial Committee, about two or so years ago, we had a meeting, before it was even an actual committee, it was just a group trying to set up this committee, and we were meeting at the Art Center down on Main Street, and as I walked in, I saw the senator pulling in, and, and I asked Steve Brady, among others, if anybody was asking, was expecting Senator Moore that evening, and nobody seemed to be expecting Senator Moore that night, nobody knew he was coming. This wasn't, to my knowledge, I don't remember this being posted in the newspaper or anything, there was no, it wasn't a town board or anything at that point, and Senator Moore came in, helped us out with a great deal of information with other communities that are doing the same sort of thing, whether it's their bicentennial, tercentennial, or otherwise, and provided us with a great deal of information, and told us about some funds that he may be able to acquire for us, and lo and behold, not too long after that, we were in receipt of a $20,000 grant for seed money, which will go certainly a very long way as we plan a lot of great bicentennial events over the next 18 or so months. So with that, we have a number of bicentennial members, and I'd turn it over, they'll all come up, I think, but I'll turn it over to our co-chairman Steve Brady for another presentation.
Again, thank you, Senator. Here are a couple of things for you. Another little certificate of appreciation by the Southbridge Bicentennial Committee. It's a certificate of appreciation to be presented to Richard Moore, in acknowledgement for his support and dedication to the Southbridge Bicentennial, and it's signed by Sean Moriarty and myself, and it's... Also, with all your support in helping us get a grant, the least we could do is present you with a, with a polo shirt.
Thank you.
For all your dedication to our cause, and a nice little Southbridge Bicentennial logo, and we have a couple of bookmarks as reminders of your hard work, and on the back, it has all our main events, and we have Diane Gagnon here, who'll present another token of our appreciation to the senator's wife.
On behalf of the Southbridge Bicentennial Committee, we'd like to present this to your wife. It's a bracelet. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. It's very nice. Thank you so much. You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you first to the council for making time available for this little occasion, and through you to the people of Southbridge for their support at the elections certainly, and beyond that too, over the last 20 years. My connections to Southbridge actually predate my service in the Senate, in that back in, I guess it was probably late '94, early '95, I received a call from the late Counselor Lawrence Larry McDonald about the town's interest in having the Department of Defense consider developing an accounting center at the former American Optical Plant, and I happened to be working for the President of the United States at the time, and he wanted to make sure that the president knew that Southbridge was a good town for him, and also that they would, they would like the support of the Clinton Administration, and ultimately that, and not that I would take full credit for that, but I mean, I did pass the, the request along, but I know they also heard from Congressman Neal and Senator Kennedy, and I think Senator Kerry at the time as well, and while the Department of Defense didn't fully implement all the, all of what they had planned to do at the time, the Defense Department's interest changed a bit, but that facility has become a real asset in the community, it's just perhaps an underutilized asset, but becoming more utilized, because I think one of the very positive stories of the last 20 years, particularly the last few years, last decade maybe, is the involvement of Quinzigman Community College using part of that facility, and now with the interest in expanding to not only Quinzigman, but other, both public and private institutions of higher education, to look for an advanced manufacturing technology center in that area, and utilizing some of the classroom space that the Department of Defense was using and occasionally has used as well, so that it's, it's become an asset in place that it would be hard to replicate, at least very expensive to replicate, where we'd use state or local or even private funding to do that. And so I think the, that program, which brings both economic development and certainly job potential for Southbridge and area residents, is a very positive thing that will keep giving dividends for many years to come. We also, I would encourage the council to, while there's no current plans to make changes in the registry of motor vehicle service delivery, but to stay on top of that issue, because the, in efforts to cut budgets and contain spending that goes on at every level of government these days, that's always a, an area that we need to watch, because while technology can do a lot, and other, there are other ways to collect information for the registry, this part of the Commonwealth is an underserved area and somewhat remote to the, at least the urban areas. If you had to go to Worcester or to Springfield to do the kind of registry business, and a lot of it has to still be done in, with at least some personal contact, and certainly the driving, getting the license itself, you can't do totally online, we do need to know that you can drive as well, and so I think that's one that, it was a long fight, former Representative Alicia was involved in that, Representative Durant more recently, as well as me, and I would hate to see that regress in any way, because I think it's an important asset and service to the people of Southbridge and the area, but also it brings people into the downtown, so from a commercial standpoint, I'm sure has some benefit to some of the smaller businesses in that, in that particular area. The other, one of the other projects that former Representative Alicia and I were able to do was to get the $737,000 from the state to reimburse the town of Southbridge, when the previous manager was able to get it at auction, but we managed to, everywhere else we were giving them away practically, so we wanted to make sure that continued and Southbridge was reimbursed for, for that particular facility. There are some great programs going on in the community, the Cops and Kids Program that I think is just a model of how to deal with young people and help to keep them in the, going in the right direction, when they could otherwise perhaps get into some difficulties, but give them the kind of guidance, and, and Chief Schrepp, Lieutenant Dinghy, and others who have made that program the success that it is, and largely with a lot of private support these days, but hopefully that can continue to be a program that benefits the community. Certainly, the Armory, the community center itself, and the, and combined with senior center, is an asset that the town has and continues to enjoy. I think one of the areas that the town hopefully will continue to work on is with the school system. It, it continues to need the support of the community, particularly for some stability and continuity in the leadership of the school system and of the schools, individual schools, and support for the students and the faculty and the staff there. I would hope that parents of school-aged children in Southbridge would continue to support that school, if they don't have children that are going there now, or at Bay Path, which is really essentially also a local facility, they, to rethink that, unless they're, just because it's, the school system, it's a great facility now, and I think it needs that support to really make sure that the, you know, it's perhaps trite, but it's often said that that's the future of the community, not only from the standpoint of the young people and making sure they're well-prepared, but particularly from the standpoint of, as businesses look at Southbridge to locate here or to stay here, this quality of the school system is an important asset that develop, people who want to locate here, want to grow here, look at, because they want to make sure that if they move here, or their families, the families of their workers live here, that they're going to have a first-class education, and I think the potential is there, if you can get some stability in the leadership and support, and the, it's not, and it doesn't fall directly under the council, certainly, but the council can, as a community representative group, support that system and encourage the schools to do what needs to be done, to strengthen that, and also to lobby the legislative delegation and the Baker Administration for adequate support, both financially and technically, and from a consultant standpoint and other things, to provide that, because it is probably the, the one most, most serious issue for the community, I think, is the, is the quality of the schools, and they need to make sure that they are first-class, and that the students of, of Southbridge feel that they can go to that school and get a great education. I think they can, and, but I think they need to be reassured of that, and they need to see a, a pattern, and I'm not telling this council anything that you don't already know, but it's, but I would say it is, since we're on, on camera tonight, an opportunity to make sure that the people of the community know that this is something that deserves their support, it merits that support, and one that is vital to the success of the community over the next several decades. So I've been privileged to serve not only with this council, but with a number of other folks who've served from on and off the council over the years, and I think probably for permanent... folks who've served from on and off the council over the years and I think probably four permanent managers and about the same number of interim town managers, I think, in the process over that time, and all have brought their talents and energies to the community and have been a beneficial community. Your current interim town manager, my impression is he's doing a great job, too bad he can't stay a little longer and continue providing that great job, but it's, you've had some good leadership over the years. And I started representing the community when Florence Chandler was here and she was a very special lady. I think I'll leave it at that. But certainly, this community has, I think, not only a proud past that the Bicentennial Commission is helping to remind the residents in the areas of, but also, I think, has a very bright future. And if we can continue along the progress that's being made and with some progress in the school system, I think it will be a great community once again. But thank you for this honor. It's a privilege to have worked with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to agenda item number eight, which is Citizens Forum. If we have any residents in attendance here that would like to come forward and speak, just state your name and address and you'll be given five minutes. And I think we need to further those rules for the current speaker.
Sorry, Senator Moore. Dave Langer in 800 Worcester Street, Southbridge. Could be back in the chamber, it's been a little while, but I really came here for two reasons tonight. It's not every day you want to leave the house when it's zero out. So these two things mean a lot to me. First of all, I really wanted to come and say thank you to Senator Moore for all that he's done for our community and as the chair and the council recognize. So again, I can't thank you enough and you will be missed and I'm sure you will be around. So I do thank you for all your service. Secondly, it was really encouraging tonight to sit here and hear the town manager speak on behalf of the DPW. First, I want to thank the DPW for all their hard work on these challenging times this winter because it's extremely challenging and they've all done a great, great job. So thank you to all of them because they're sacrificing from their families in safety and stuff like that, so thank you. The second thing is it's so encouraging, encouraging to see this council, this current town manager that's sitting in, to force things that personally I, it's been a pet peeve for at least two, three years that I've spoke to other councils about, and that's snow removal operations. It's thinking outside the box and I'm sure you heard me sit up there before and say, you know, well, we always say, this is how we've always done it. So I would encourage this council to sit down and make some sort of a policy because you know what happens in this community and it happens in a lot of communities? You find people will all leave and another town manager will be in and then we can go back to status quo again. I would say this council, and I'll challenge you, this council, to sit down in a subcommittee and maybe put a policy in place saying, because it's proven, it's proven that we can do snow removal during the day very effectively with a cost savings. And quite frankly, if you speak to some of the DPW's people, they're okay with that because they're exhausted. They need their sleep. So I just want to say again, thank you to all of yous. Thank you to town manager. It's a huge step forward and, you know, you're coming into budget season and we all know how we get torn on that and it's challenging, but just little steps turning to big steps, I always say. So I want to thank you again and I want to thank the DPW. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other residents who'd like to come forward? Just state your name and address, please.
Good evening. Kevin Buxton, 28 Columbus Ave. There are a couple of items I'd like to talk to the council about tonight. After watching the last meeting, I'm glad to see the situation that you are opening your eyes and trying to get your head around the budget situation, where money can be saved and everything. I just want to cover a couple of items where in the past I've mentioned. And one of the items I mentioned was the townwide trash barrel program. I mentioned we had eighty trash barrels sitting down at DPW facility and I asked what the situation was and it was said that it was, oh, we're gonna, everybody's gonna get new trash barrels. Just to do the math on that, forty-five hundred households being picked up in Southbridge. That's a ballpark figure, I don't know if it's accurate. That costs us three hundred, excuse me, $245,000, $234,000. Now, the eighty that we have, can we return them? If not, maybe we could sell them at cost, but I don't think we want to go to the next step in purchase anymore of them. You may be told that that's not going to cost the taxpayers anything, that it will be coming from the recycle reward account, which leads me to the recycle reward account. The recycle reward account was set up when they eliminated the, I can't think of the name of the program. Anyway, the recycle reward account is based on one dollar per month per household. They estimate the high limit at six thousand households. One dollar per month comes to $72,000 a year. My request to the council would be to audit and review this account. These funds are coming from the landfill extension agreement. They are rewards towards the residents. I'm not saying twelve dollars a month for any resident that throws away trash is going to reduce their taxes, but however, if this money is slated for that purpose, I'd like it to be reviewed because it's been used quite a bit by the Board of Health for various items. The Green Brown contract comes to mind, the travel tumblers which we received. I was actually part of the sustainability program that said, let's order travel tumblers. I'm not complaining about that. We agreed on it, the board agreed on it, it was a minor thing. But this account over the years, even like I said, it could have gone where it was generated. The residents of town generated those funds, it could have came off of the residential tax burden. Under the Board of Health, you mentioned in your proclamation that you would like to see one percent cut from every budget. The Board of Health is presently one of the largest budgets, I assume it's $750,000. As a layman, I don't claim to know how much of that is reimbursed, how much of that goes for how many employees. However, at $750,000, that's $72,000 which they use is kind of like mad money. So the two things I'd like this council to just consider is sometime after Citizens Forum, and feel free to paraphrase, but if we could, if somebody had the intention of saying, I'd like to make a motion that we cease and desist the trash barrel purchase program. And following that, maybe somebody could possibly say, I make a motion, we audit the recycle reward program. I think those are two items that need to be looked into. I thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Do we have any other residents?
Brent A. Perhapsen, 26 Franklin Terrace, and I'm speaking tonight as a citizen. Mr. Chairman, at the last town council meeting, the council voted to raise the interim town manager's hours from thirty-seven point five per week to forty, which at the same time has the effect of raising his pay. This in no way is a criticism of that vote or its intent. I'm just looking for clarification on its effect. The town manager, I believe that this vote pushes up the time when he must leave his position here. It makes, it means he will have to leave earlier. As a municipal retiree, he has both a limit to the number of hours that he can give or serve and a earnings limit. Now, the nine hundred and sixty hours is easy to figure out, is twenty-four weeks and forty hours. I wonder if the town has figured out whether the earnings limit is before that or after that. In other words, we can determine, the date's certain, when the town manager must leave. And I wonder if that's been determined because whichever comes first, either the earnings or the hours, that determines it. So I believe this will also be important information for the town manager's search committee. Either they must complete the work at a time certain or begin making preparations for maybe a third interim town manager, and that would be in a row. So as a final note, I believe the law concerning retirees' earnings and hours worked puts the onus on both the employee and the employer of the town of Southbridge and for maintaining this information. And I believe both the retiree and the employer may be subject to penalties, but I'm not exactly certain on that. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you. I know that the manager is acutely aware of where he stands within that retirement and his pension and I will let him speak on that.
Yeah, it shouldn't be an issue irrespective, I can do the math to compute how many weeks that is, but as I've indicated to the chair and the vice chair, roughly it's nine hundred and sixty hours that a retiree is allowed to work and that will occur roughly the end of July, six months, end of June, I'm sorry, six months.
And then fifteen hours in July, I figured that out, too.
Right. And that's at the forty-hour basis and I'm going to guess that the thirty-seven and a half would go a few more, a few more three, four weeks, something like that. But either way, it's not going to be an issue.
Excuse me, I did figure it though. With the thirty-seven and a half that you worked and then the forty.
The extra two and a half hours a week probably translates into a few more weeks.
Correct.
But it's not an issue in either event because I've indicated to the chair and the vice chair, should it come to pass that by June, we don't have a new town manager, it's perhaps the negotiations are pending, perhaps the notice requirement leaving one community to come here is delaying it by a few weeks. I committed that I'll work up to two months for no pay.
Guess we can't ask for any more than that.
And it's out there now, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Vice Chairman. I managed to do it on camera, didn't I? So I guess I'm really committed now.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If we could start those two months now, though, that'd be even better. Do we have any other residents who would like to come forward to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda or the manager's salary? Seeing none. We'll move on, certainly. Councilor Krasco?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to move agenda item number nine to supersede agenda item number ten.
Do you mean the other way around?
Yeah, excuse me.
So we would take...
We need to move agenda item number ten to make it actual number nine instead of opposite.
Councilor Clemens?
Having been to the MMA recently. These were some of the things that we discussed in terms of agendas and the general order of how you take on your agenda is not as important and is not, you do not have to actually go through the amendment process as it was explained to us by the Attorney General's Office who gave the speech that evening. So we're clearly, we're good about it if that's what you want to do and if anyone has any questions, they certainly can contact the Attorney General's Office, but it was spoken to a room of about a hundred people or so at least. So, and it was nice to know that because that happens in subcommittee occasionally where we take an amendment and on and on. So it's nice that we can dispense with that.
Sure. Before we proceed, does anybody have any objections to taking this as, taking the Gulfwood Road discussion as the next agenda item? Okay, seeing none. Just briefly, it's, I know the manager has another commitment this evening and in respect and deference to that time, which we are rapidly hitting, I wanted to make sure we could have him here. It's more important the manager here for that one than for the town manager profile, at least in my opinion, and I think the manager concurred. So agenda item number, technically it would be number nine right now, is vote to approve the zoning map change on Gulfwood Road to rezone the rear portion of the property at seventy-nine Gulfwood Road from two-family residential to a light industrial zone as recommended by the planning board. And this will be the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second, and I'll just read this briefly. In accordance with provisions of chapter, I'm not going to read the entire letter, but the parts that are pertinent. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter Forty, Section Five Mass General Law, at the Southbridge Planning Board held a public hearing on Wednesday, January seven, two thousand and fifteen, at six forty-five PM in the G A R Hall in the lower level of the Southbridge Town Hall. The public hearing was open following legal advertisement, posting and mailings to the planning boards of surrounding towns, Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission and the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. Quorum was reached and the purpose of the public hearing was to receive public comment and consider an amendment to the Southbridge zoning map as follows. Expand the light industrial zone on Gulfwood Road by rezoning the rear portion of the property at seventy-nine Gulfwood Road, assessors map twenty-two, lot seventy-two. The rear portion of the lot is currently zoned two-family residential and the proposed zoning change will make the entire lot light industrial as shown on a map entitled Gulfwood Road Zoning Map Request, two thousand and fourteen. Just briefly, discussion was held and the public hearing was closed and a motion was made and seconded with a unanimous vote to recommend the approval of this proposed amendment. Do we have any questions, comments or discussion at this time? This again is just the first reading. Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Councilor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Peliquin?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Krasco?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to agenda item number ten now, which is the vote to support the town manager profile prepared by the Edward J. Collins Junior Center and the Town Manager Search Committee.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments or discussion? Councilor Steves?
Thank you. Unfortunately, I definitely should have sent my comments directly to Mr. Kobayashi, but I started reading the process and honestly got distracted and never finished it. So I do have a couple of things I'd like to point out, like I'd love to see added to it. One is that under, the section under challenges for the town manager leadership.
I can't hear you.
I'd like to add a few things added, I'd like to see us add a few things to the profile. One, under the challenges for the town manager, under leadership, I'd love to see it added a phrase, "And encourage citizens to get more involved in town affairs" at the end. I would like to see, let's see here, under budget planning and preparation, at the very end, I'd love to see it added, "And local preparedness for climate, energy and other Okay? I would also like to see under the ideal candidate in that paragraph, third paragraph there, I'd love to see some reference to after town service levels in the second line, I'd love to see somebody add, "While promoting and increasing local resilience in the face of change." Let's see, "And," under professional attributes in the first paragraph, that first bullet point, I'd love to see reference to, Spanish is very helpful. And that's, that's it. Thanks.
Yes, I just want to make a point that I know it says, "Vote to support the town manager profile prepared by the Edward J. Collins Center," but I just want to make an emphasis that this document was... that this document was prepared by several department heads that were interviewed by Mr. Kobayashi, and also every town council member was interviewed by Mr. Kobayashi, and this profile was put together with the input. And also, each counselor had the opportunity to make their comments and suggestions prior to this getting here tonight. There was a deadline. We had over a week to review it. I understand, but at the same time, Counselor Steves, I understand your concerns and your suggestions, but I would hate to bring this back to Subcommittee and delay this another month, because this is what's going to happen. So I, I understand. I think it's a very detailed document that does list a lot of our challenges, a lot of our attributes that, that we're looking for in a town manager, but at the same time, I really do like the highlights, that it highlights our community. And so just, I understand your concern and you wish to change such a document, but I just, again, I just want to let the public know that this, this document was created not just by the Edward J. Collins Center, but it was a collaborative effort within townwide, with department heads, also with all nine council members. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, Mr. Chairman...
Sure, since you referenced it.
No, I'm sorry. Actually, although I was at the last meeting of the Town Manager Search Committee where Mr. Kobayashi was here, he, he never actually called me. So I don't know, I don't know if other people actually didn't get called either, but I never actually spoke to him after that meeting.
Good to know. Counselor Clemens?
Thank you. Through you to the Counselor Steves. But you received this document, like we did, email, and it said to please return it by Friday with your changes, correct?
And as I said, I admitted that I started reading it, and it got lost in the shuffle.
Yeah. So your, I think your comments are good and noted, and, but I think it's also something that could come across during interview process time. Those are types of things you could ask, because they're, in some ways, some of the comments or the concerns you have are almost more, I don't know, internal in some ways, for some people more, or more notable on, for some people's characteristics than, than others in certain things. I mean, I was having a little hard time, but I did get a number of ideas that you wanted to add on to here.
Okay.
I think this is pretty thorough to what we should be looking for in, for the most part. There, you know, as far as, you know, the Spanish, well, that'll be easy to figure out whether they, you know, to ask them, or whether their encouragement, obviously, for getting involved. I think that's policy for every council to, to make sure their leader, no matter whether it's us or down the road, you know, encourages continuously. That's our job, too, to encourage continuously to get people involved. So I think it's almost, the statements make sense, but maybe they're just almost kind of thought already there. You know, we would want those types of qualities, I think, during the interview process, which I'm, I would bet and certainly put money on it that you'll be part of that process.
I certainly intend to be.
Because I don't believe anyone's hanging around for the next, you know, couple of years. So on that note, I wouldn't recommend a change, because I think at this point, I would expect Mr. Kobayashi to believe that this is, he's probably moving forward on this particular document, I would imagine. We're supporting it, but ultimately, it's, it's a process that if we didn't get it to him by last Friday or whatever, I would assume they've done some work already to start implementing it. He was pretty quick.
They probably have, yeah.
They've been very, I've been impressed so far with their procedures and process. So just my thoughts.
Just as a quick aside as well, though not necessarily as explicit as some of your suggestions, I think some of the thoughts are, in one way or another, laid out in here. It does, it does speak in this document a good deal about communication and the manager needing to communicate with the community, which, to an extent, invokes the piece about encouragement of activity. It also, on the front page, talks about the large Spanish-speaking population, and again, to me anyways, with the communication piece, when it's talking about communicating with all in Southbridge, that would be part and parcel. So I would, I would concur at this time that I think it's, rather than just adding those specifics, I think they're generally in there. Counselor Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to also point out, in our Charter, Section 4-2-3, it lays out the manager's roles, and if you go down to line number C, it talks about keeping the council informed on long-range things that the town needs, and that, to me, would be our town manager out in our community, talking with people, and visiting the businesses and whatnot. So I think it's pretty well laid out here in what we received, and also in our Charter, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yeah, I just want to note to the public and also to the council, if this gets passed today, the official job posting's tomorrow. So we start moving forward tomorrow. So if we delay the process, we delay it longer. And as we hear so generous that our town manager is willing to work two months for free, it's, thank you.[958.44][958.44](Laughter) But at the same time, we do have to look at the best interests of our community and have somebody personally, permanently.
I agree. I'm not, I'm not trying to delay the process at all. I just wanted to get those ideas out there. That's all.
Absolutely. Has Mrs. Pecos been informed of this?[976.25][976.25](Laughter)
No, and nobody had better send her a videotape of this. I'm in big trouble.
Any other questions or comments regarding the town manager draft? Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Krasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. Which brings us to Agenda Item Number 11, Counselors' Forum, and this time around, we'll start with Counselor Clemens.
Thank you. I enjoyed myself at the dance. Thank you very much to the Bicentennial Committee. It was beautiful. You guys transformed the Knights of Columbus and with the snow. I was curious how you guys would do, but very proud that people did come out and support the beginning of this. So kudos to you guys for putting in so much work and effort. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Estrada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I go back on the last point in the last meeting. I go back to refund. I have no problem that every professional, I would pay. Again, I'm professional. I like it to pay. Only, what is the priority in the city? What is more important now for the city, increase the salary for different director employment, or increase the service of the old resident? My point. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just a couple of things. Excuse me. Speaking about the, the snow removal, I also want to thank the DPW and the town manager for being on top of things, and all of our safety, Fire Department, Police Department, those residents concerned about their streets being too narrow and abiding by the parking regulations, which brings me to tonight. On my street, Maple Street, it's a, it's a very narrow street. It's even more narrow in the winter when we have 10,000 feet of snow. And when you're not abiding by the parking rules, then it's very hard to get out. And even if you are abiding by the parking rules, and if you see somebody on the opposite side, and you know full well that another vehicle cannot get through, then to me, you're not abiding by the parking rules. It's common sense. Use your common sense. And, you know, pretty soon, I'm just going to start calling the police when, when, when I see something, because it's, it's just, it's just not right. It's not right if there's an emergency, if there's a fire, if somebody needs an ambulance, and these people can't get down there, then that's, that's a tragedy. So abide by the parking rules. There were a couple of streets that I did want to mention tonight. Pine Street, going up Pine Street for Main Street. That is, just that one end, before you get down to Hamilton Street, there seems to be snow from the sidewalk out to the street that just hasn't been removed, and that's two-sided parking, and it's really getting now to get down that street.
Intersection of Pine and Hamilton?
No, on Main Street. If you go in, if you're coming into town through, from Big Bunny, Sturbridge Way, and you take your left onto Pine Street, that, that street, you're going down to, you're not down on Hamilton Street, you're still at the Main Street part. That and right there, the, the snow is...
Across from Felix.
Across from where?
Oh, from Felix, yes. Okay. Thank you. The Vienna, yes. So, yeah, that's Pine Street. So that, you know, and, and then I did have one of my neighbors, who was on the corner, me and Maple, asked me, is there something that they can do about the snow? Because the snow right there on the corner, when you're coming in, it's, it's just, there's just so much, and it just didn't seem to get plowed down at that end for some reason. I, I don't know. It is plowed, but it's just, like, it's out there still, you know? I don't know whose responsibility it is, because the sidewalk's cleared, but there's just so much snow on both sides, and it makes parking very difficult. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because somebody brought it to my attention, and on that note, I traveled this past week, and on my way home this weekend, I was sitting at an airport in Minnesota, and you never knew who you were going to sit next to at an airport. I was talking to a gentleman, and he brought up, we were talking about kids, and I brought up my grandchild, and he brought up his daughter, and he showed me a picture of his daughter, and I said, oh, is that your first one? And he told me, no. His first child was killed during the Newtown School shootings. And I just, like, you know, I, I was shocked to hear that. And he was telling me his story, and then he was telling me about a foundation that he started after the murder of his daughter. And it's called the Aviel Foundation. And that foundation is to do research on what he calls brain health, brain illness, and also on urban violence. And it's all in the memory of his daughter. And then he told me about smile.amazon.com, and how you can go on, and you can actually go and search for a foundation and put that foundation in, and if you do shopping on Amazon, Amazon will put 0.5% towards that foundation. So I just found it very inspiring, coming from something so tragic, that he could do something so good out of that. And I just want to bring attention to that. And it's theaviellfoundation.org, and it's all a memory of Aviel Richmond, and her father, Jeremy Richmond, he's a doctor, is the one that created this foundation out of her memory. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention. And it was very, the story was very sad, but it was inspiring because of the goodness that he, he brought out of this. So, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Could you just spell out the name of the foundation?
Aviel is A-V-I-E-L-L-E. Avielfoundation.org.
Thank you. And the Amazon Smile program has a wide variety of different charities, some you've heard and some you haven't heard of. And I know I've, I've got that with the Jimmy Fund, what I have. Counselor Pellican?
I would just like to say that I think the daytime snow removal is going great, and I'd like to thank the manager for being proactive and trying to save us money with doing our snow removal that way. I think you're doing a great job, Mr. Pecos, and obviously, I think the DPW is doing a great job this year as well. So thank you. And Senator Moore left, but I just wanted to thank Senator Moore for his years upon years of service to the community. There's so much that he had a hand in that I think a lot of people didn't know about. So it was great to hear how involved he was from the bicentennial, from the get-go, to building the New Middle High School, to a lot of different initiatives over the years. I guess that's it for me tonight. I had one other question. Why is the front side door to the building locked now?
Downstairs, the, the door most people probably use, that front side door being locked during evenings?
I don't know. But you can rest assured I'll find out.
Kind of a pain.
Is it that, in the hallway downstairs, the one that faces that way?
Yeah. My assumption, right, my assumption is because of the ice and snow on the roof, it drop, one, it tends to drop there with large icicles, but two, it's someplace that has a lot of, of just the black ice, that it's a very slippery area. There, there has been a sign posted there over the last, I'd say, two months, that has indicated for evening meetings, please use the other entrance.
Is there a sign on there tonight?
There is.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll find out for sure, but that must be why.
If, if that's why, then I understand. But if, if there's some other reason, I would say that I'd prefer to have it open.
Right, absolutely.
I mean, I think in terms of the open meeting law, we want to have as many doors open as we possibly can. So.
Right.
Thank you.
Keep access as possible, as open as possible. Counselor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, only, we talked a bit about the plowing issue already, and I agree with the, what everybody said about the DPW is doing, doing a great job on it. So I was going to bring that up over did on that. But I also wanted to ask about this, just mention this, that I was at the school budget Subcommittee just before this meeting, and I just wanted to point out, as far as for our planning purposes, that they are doing, that they're looking at doing their next budget Subcommittee for the March 9th, if I understood them properly, and that they're looking at doing a school committee of the whole. It's currently slated for March 4th, but they're probably going to try to reschedule to March 18th. So then that's supposed to be entirely for budget issues, if I understood them right. So we might, might want to keep tabs on that. Their goal, as I understand it, is to, to finish off their budget by the 24th. So they, then they did raise a whole bunch of different issues regarding their concerns about, primarily about our, our vote from last, the last session regarding, they were raising concerns about, about the fact that the 2% covers, that the cutting, cutting all of the money that we're, we're talking about cutting from the tax levy is a concern for theirs, because they're, basically, their expenses almost require having a 2% increase every year, and some of them are also expenses that we have, too, you know, energy and those other things. So I don't know. We'll see what they can do with it, obviously. And we did, we did vote what we voted. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Thanks. Counselor Vandal?
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the DPW for the great job that they're doing, and especially Heather Blake. Heather, Heather...
Blakely.
Blakely. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carrasco?
Yes, I just got two quick things. I just want to just quickly address my fellow counselors and just say, as a campaign promise that I made to the public, there will be times where we disagree. There will be times where we don't see eye to eye, but there's one thing that I can forever say and hold. I will never disrespect you on this diocese, and I will never disrespect anyone, because that is not the way we handle ourselves as public officials, and that's not something that I will allow to come out of my mouth. So have my word, I will always respect you, though we might disagree and agree. But this is the beauty of government. We have the right to continue to work together, though we disagree. The second thing is, I, I just want to, I know there was a mention during our joint meeting in regards to a comment that I made. I, at no point in time do I refer as my town as dooming loom or a negative place. Southbridge is my home. I was born here in '82, right there in Harrington Memorial Hospital. Haven't left. I don't plan on leaving. There's a lot of things that are going on here, and I think part of, maybe I, maybe I did not address myself properly or articulate my thoughts properly. I have a problem with that. Sometimes I speak too fast without properly thinking. But I, I want to address the public and assure that our town is full of a lot of positive people, a lot of great things that are going on. We have great people that work in our community, and, and I think there's got to be a better way that we do things. We need to do a better way in attracting businesses. We need to do a better way in keeping our students in our school system. So, at no point in time did I mean to sound that way, but I want to assure the citizens that my thoughts for this community are nothing but good. That's why I ran, and that's why I'm still here, 'cause there's been nights that I wish I had not run. I'm blunt, I'm honest, and I'm frank. Like, coming home at twelve-thirty at night, it, it's difficult when you have a family, you have an occupation, but at the same time, this is what I signed up for, because I love my community, and I will continue to do the best that I can with the information that's presented before me, and I also wanna thank my counselors for their devoted time, 'cause it's not easy. Some of you have been doing it a long time, Conrad's been doing it a long, long, long time, and besides Conrad, Ms. Counselor Clemens has done it for approximately six years. So it's, it's, it's not an easy task, but it's a task that's being done, and we're doing it wholeheartedly. Some of us are more passionate than others. If you know me outside of this place, I'm very passionate in everything that I do, so I bring that same passion to the table, because the things that I love, I'm gonna fight for. So with that said, thank you, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Discussion of Next Meeting Date.
That will be March ninth, seven PM here at Council Chambers.
And Agenda Item Number Thirteen is Adjournment.
So moved.
Second, on favor. Thank you, we are adjourned.